Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting, September 18th. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Before we start our normal meeting, if you will, we have Troop Six here to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you feel like we did that already? Do you think I skipped something there? It is so important to the town of Bristol that we represent the flag that we're going to do it again. So if Troop Six could come up and lead us in that, if you would. And we're all going to stand again, if we all.
That's true. You're right.
I was just helping you with the words there. On your lead, gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think you guys did a much better job at it, so, nice job. Thank you, Troop Six. Those are our future leaders, and one of the most treasured things that we get to do is go to an Eagle Scout Court of Honor. And the town has this amazing track record of Eagle Scouts. It's impressive, the amount of Eagle Scouts that come out of Bristol, out of, just in our troops in general. And that's what they look like now, and what they're going to look like as you all hit Eagle Scout, or at least that's the goal. We also have something else. As you can see, we have a lot of police presence here tonight, and it's for a good reason. I understand, Mr. Administrator, you'd like to share an announcement.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I do have an announcement. We've finalized our selection process for a police chief. It's a process that started in advertisements in April. There were, there was an evaluation panel with eight members of the community, plus myself, in May. Those points were then forwarded to the Personnel Board, where a written examination was administered by the Personnel Board. That was in July. And then, there was a second interview, myself and, actually, I had the Chairman of the Council assist with the second interview. And that was the three finalists. By town code, it require, the town code requires that the Administrator selects from the top three finalists from the process. So, I'm very pleased to announce that I have, I have narrowed down the selection process and am pleased to announce that we'll be appointing Mr. Kevin Lynch, who's here tonight, as our next police chief in Bristol, a permanent police chief. And I'll, before, I'd like to ask that Mr. Lynch comes up and introduce himself, but before I do, I'd like to say a little bit about him. He's well-known throughout the state. He's been in law enforcement circles for decades. He was the Lieutenant Colonel, the number-two person in command of the Cranston Police Department. He retired in 2009. After that, he went to the State of Rhode Island, and he's currently the acting Administrator at the Department of Public Utilities and Carriers. So, he has a wealth of knowledge in different areas. He also is a coach, a mentor. He teaches law enforcement ethics training. He teaches patrol procedures and a number of other courses at Roger Williams University, CCRI, and also BCC. So, he's very well-regarded in law enforcement circles. He has, he came to the evaluation with a 90-day plan for the Bristol Police Department, so he's very well-prepared. I have the utmost confidence in him. And word got out today, officially, late today, I announced it to Chief Burke, and right away, I was getting calls from people saying that it was such a great choice, and I think we're very lucky to have him leave his post at the state and come here to Bristol. He's here with his wife Lynn, his son Justin, and I know his daughter Sienna is, has an event tonight, and is out of the area. But also, I'd like to recognize that Chief Winquist and his command staff are present. Chief Winquist is currently the Cranston Chief, but I don't know if you remember, he was the Lieutenant Colonel at the Rhode Island State Police, and he retired from there several years ago. So, it means a lot that family and colleagues are here to support him. And I also want to thank the members of our department that just got word, and they're here. So, I'm looking forward to the date where we can formally swear him in. He's working on a transition report to the Governor's Office, who I did call today. And once that's complete, we want to make, we do have an interim chief, and things are running smoothly with Chief Burke, so we're in good shape currently. But we're looking forward to a formal ceremony where the public will be invited, and then there'll be a change of command at the Police Department with the rank and file. But at this point, I'd like to welcome, Chief-elect, I'd like to say, Kevin Lynch, and to introduce himself.
Well, good evening. I have a canned speech, like every policeman would when they're addressing a city council or a group, but I want to start out by humbled I am with the fast assembly of the members of the Bristol Police Department, and I want to thank you personally, Chief. It's a great boost of confidence to walk through the door and to see the men and women, both sworn and civilian, ready here, prepared, for a new transition in a new day for the Bristol Police Department. I'm truly humbled, myself and my family. It was overwhelming to walk through the door and to see that many uniforms, with such a quick announcement by the Town Administrator. I believe an email went out at 5:00, so I'm indebted to the men and women. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. But Council President, I want to thank Administrator Contente for that introduction, and also thank you for serving on the selection panel. And I'm here to address the council tonight, and as I stated, I'm very humbled and elated to be selected as your new police chief. I look forward to meeting with you all individually and to discuss your vision for the town of Bristol and the Bristol Police Department in the coming weeks and months. I am certain that my hallmark of customer service and excellence in delivering a valued work product to the citizens will be something I want to discuss with each and every one of you. I truly believe that in order to make a difference in the Police Department, I have to become the fabric of Bristol. I will be at many events with you. I'll be relying on you to help me become a better leader for the town of Bristol, and I'll be speaking with you individually about how I can do that. When I teach leadership classes at Roger Williams, I think one of the characteristics and traits that I teach students is that listening is probably the best attribute that a new leader can have. So, I plan on listening to all of the men and women of the Police Department individually, interviewing each and every one of them about how we're going to make a difference in the Police Department. So, those are the things, along with a 90-day plan, that I hope that the Town Administrator will be sharing with you, that I envision. I'll be sharing my resume, my CV, and my 90-day plan with each and every member of the Police Department. I'll be calling upon them to tell me what changes need to happen in the Police Department. I know already, through all of my research and law enforcement contacts, that this is an excellent Police Department. It's well-regarded in the law enforcement community. And as I can recall during my research, when I was interviewing with the community, every year, as I noted on the UCR crime reports, the crime rate continues to tick down in the town of Bristol. And I can tell you, that's because there's hard work every year being done by the men and women, both sworn and civilian, within the Bristol Police Department. But I would like to introduce to you, and I'm humbled to have my former alma mater and my colleagues from the Cranston Police Department here tonight to support my candidacy. Colonel Michael Winquist, who the Town Administrator introduced, came from the State Police. To his left, Major Padalano and Major Quirk. I had the fortune of mentoring Major Padalano, and to his left, Major Quirk had the fortune of mentoring me when I came onto the Police Department, so it's nice to see that legacy in the lineup. Behind them are my two best friends and colleagues from the Cranston Police Department, Sergeant Martin Capelli and Detective Eric Bakari, who's assigned to the Computer Crimes Unit at the State Police. I would be remiss announcing my current colleagues, John Spirito, to my left, and who's the Chief Legal Counsel and former Assistant Attorney General. He's been with the State of Rhode Island for over 35 years, and also was a great mentor to me when I transitioned to law enforcement, over to the administrative law side of public utility and regulatory work. Also with me is Terrence Mercer. He's a fellow councilperson. He sits on the council in the city of Batucat. And Terry is our Associate Administrator and our Chief of Enforcement, and a good friend and a coach when I joined the DPUC. When I came there, I didn't know the difference between a decotherm gas or a kilowatt of electricity, but I had good leadership skills. These folks taught me the ropes and allowed me, as their leader, to train me along the way. So, I'm greatly indebted, and I'm going to be relying on the chief and the captains and the rest of the Police Department to do the very same. I come here with leadership skills, but I also come here to learn the ways of the Bristol Police Department in this particular community. And the only way that I can do that is to get that feedback from the men and women of the department and truly listen to them about what changes need to go. As I said throughout the interview process, I want to leave a legacy of excellence here in the town of Bristol. I want to make a difference, and I'm going to work extremely hard, and I can assure you, as the Town Council, that I have a plan. I'm completely dedicated, and I'm going to be calling upon each and every one of you to help me to do that. I'd be remiss if I didn't announce my wife Lynn Marie, of 26-years, next month, and my son Justin, who's here with my wife, and my daughter Sienna is a student, a senior at Salve Regina, and they have a track event tonight, so that certainly takes precedent over tonight's function. I know that this is not an agenda item, and I don't want to take up the whole time for the council, but I'd be remiss in telling you that I'm currently serving in an interim position, and I had two seconds to tell the chief how difficult of a job it is to serve in an interim role. So, I want to give him a lot of credit and thank you. I understand you've done an exemplary job, and the town owes you a grata gratitude for holding the line and doing the town's work and the Police Department's work. I'll be calling you tomorrow, asking you to work with me to put together a transition report, as I do the same for my superiors in state government and the governor, and asking you to help me build a seamless transition for me onboarding onto the, onto the department. So, with that, I want to say thank you. You all will be hearing from me in short notice. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to say thank you to interim Chief Burke for the efforts and energies that you've put in. I'd also like to say thank you to interim Chief Brian Peters, and also like to say thank you to Chief Josh Canario for all of you, for all of the efforts and energies that you put in. But none of this would be possible without the good men and women of the Bristol Police Department, too. So, nice job. We are looking forward to even better than we have today, and we have excellence today. So, thank you. Now, on to business. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is Item A1, and this is a submission of minutes of August 28, 2019.
So, move to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is an advertised public hearing. This is to consider the application of Vachi Avedision, Vachi Avedision LLC, doing business as Classic Pizza and Grill, 349 Medicom Avenue, request council consideration for Class BV Limited liquor license. And this is an item that was continued from June 26. You have recommendations provided by the interim chief of police, the fire chief, and also a late item from the Department of Community Development regarding the zoning board.
So, as the clerk said, this is a advertised public hearing, so I want to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Welcome.
Welcome. My sister and I would speak in favor.
Tell us who you are, please.
Nathan and Amanda Avedision.
Welcome.
So, our parents opened Classic Pizza over 35-years ago. We're very passionate about the business, about the town of Bristol, and we've just noticed over the past few years, without a beer and wine liquor license, we're not really able to provide our customers with the best experience. And it's definitely something a lot of our customers would like, so we would just be able to offer, we only want beer or wine, we don't want it to be a place for people to get drunk, we don't want it to be a bar, just something to complement their pizza. So, that's pretty much where we, where we are.
So, we give everybody, usually when they're in front of us, a 30-second commercial possibilities or anything that you wanted to share about your business, since you're in front and there's a lot of people watching?
Good luck.
You've been there for 35-years. It's great pizza. I've had it myself.
All right.
If you don't know Vachi, come meet him. Just kidding. Avoid at all costs.
We try, we try not to bring him, for your sake.
Yeah, that's why we're here. We told him to stay home, you're getting old, although he's in denial about that. But, yep, best pizza, come by.
Excellent.
Beer and wine soon.
Is there any questions or clarity we need? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Welcome.
Good evening. Stephen Bridgety from Bristol. I speak in favor because Classic Peppers, excuse me, Classic Pizza is a first-class act, and they need this kind of thing to help compete. Today's world, competition is fierce, and we welcome them to have, you know, the full arsenal, so to speak, of offerings to their customers. So, I'd recommend you vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. What's this council's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This one's a little procedurally different.
Ah, thank you.
Because the license does not yet exist. So, I would suggest that you hold off to D1, where the actual license is in the council, the order of the council business, and the matter of the license will be resolved by that point.
Well, maybe for expeditious, yes. Why don't we have a motion and move it forward?
Well, you have to vote on the ordinance. You have to vote on the ordinance.
I'm asking to move.
Okay. Well, that's not D1, that's the license.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
If you would like to, it's the, it's the very next, it's the very next item?
So, a point of clarity for everyone that's, that's watching and listening, is that this was a public hearing to talk about this. There is no extra license right now. So, the next step is you have to create a license. Once the license is created, then you can give it to someone. So, right now, there is no license to give. So, the next step is for us to create one if we so choose to do so. So, that would be?
No.
C1.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the second reading for adoption to increase the BV liquor license from five to six for Classic Pizza.
Which is C1.
Yes, C1.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve C1. Is there any discussion?
I didn't, I didn't get it. Was it Mr. Sweeney, Mr. Dexera?
Yes. So, Mr. Sweeney made the motion, Mr. Dexera made the second.
Okay.
Is there any discussion?
This.
This is not a, it's not a public hearing. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
No remonstrance.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So, if, if the council would so choose to bring forward at this point Item D1, then it can vote on the license.
Is there a motion of that effect?
So, move.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So, what we just did is moved forward D1 for the license request, for that license that we just created.
And that would be the request of Vachi Avedision, Vachi Avedision LLC, doing business as Classic Pizza, request council consideration for Class BV Limited liquor license, and this was also continued from June 26, 2019.
So, motion to approve the Class BV Limited liquor license for Classic Pizza?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. What is your current schedule? What time do you close?
Right now, we're open at 11:00 every day. Thursday, we close at 1:00, and Friday, Saturday, we close at 2:00. And the rest of the days, we're closed at 12:00.
Is this license for until 2:00? No, limited to 1:00. It's 1:00, right?
1:00.
I myself, and...
That was my question.
For myself, I, I am, I am for granting the license to you. What we do, or our past practice has been to have a three-month review. Liquor licenses renew when, Mr. Clerk, in December? Is that right?
November.
November, yes. November for, for December 1.
So, we can potentially do the review at the renewal portion, which makes sense.
That does make sense.
In regards to the timeframe, I would be more comfortable with an 11:00 o'clock. I don't mean that you have to close at 11:00, but serving alcohol until 11:00? I guess, and I'm interested to hear what my colleagues think, but it would seem that an establishment like yours is that you're having people come in, they're having dinner, whether it's with friends and family. After that, it turns into something else in my head, is I don't think you need to have liquor sales after 11:00, but I'm interested to hear what my colleagues think.
Mr. Chairman, I do concur with that. At the present time, I'd like to see a provisionary period, and then, obviously, we can review this back in November?
November, yeah.
November.
I agree. I mean, you know how I feel about liquor licenses. I mean, I recognize that all the, most of the other pizza places, or many of them in Bristol have this license. I believe you guys had come in a long time ago when you were at the other place, and you think about moving. So, I don't have an issue so much, you know, once we open that door up. And I am concerned about just introducing alcohol in another location till 1:00, though.
Yeah, I understand. I don't, I don't, I don't want anyone to just come in and drink. You know, I'd rather them buy a pizza, you know, it's worth, it's like three beers. Pizza, one pizza is a lot more money than a beer. But I understand why you don't want anyone drinking at past 11:00. You already have a bunch of establishments serving alcohol, but I don't, I don't intend that at all for someone just to come in and drink. I like prefer them buy food and have a beer. You know, after, after a few beers, you don't really want to deal with that.
So, you're amenable to the, the 11:00?
So, is that something at the review that could change?
Yes. We could definitely review it.
Yeah. Trust me, I have no desire to deal with drunks, huh? So, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to put on a record that my recommendation initially, my recommendation on this matter was to deny the creation of a new BVL liquor license. Has nothing to do with the establishment, just with the creation of a new license. They're currently capped at five for BVL. There are 46 total liquor licenses right now in the town of Bristol.
Chief, could you, I, I think we all know what it means, but I think it's worth saying it again. A BVL, what does that mean?
Limited, limited, a BV limited, BV limited.
So, that means a beer and wine only?
Beer and wine, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Like I said, as of right now, there are five on the, on the ordinance. All five licenses are accounted for. It would be my recommendation, rather than creating a new license, to have a list, and when one becomes available, the business in line could have the license. Again, I stated, there's 46 total liquor licenses in the town of Bristol. With that, the Police Department is tasked with quality of life issues, noise, public intoxication, urinating in public, which are around all the liquor establishments between the late hours, particularly between the hours of 10:00 and closing of 1:00 a.m. We usually have three officers working at those hours. That's our minimum staffing. And there are many times when we are getting complaints for noise, public urination, public intoxication, not specifically to the area of the liquor establishments, but the surrounding area. And one can quickly determine that the people we're dealing with are coming from those establishments. Again, I want to stress, it's quality of life issues, and when we deal with those individuals, more times than not, it's because they're intoxicated. We have BYOB establishments in this town that are doing very well. And again, the, the quality of life issues are a concern with the late, with the late hours. So, if it's, if it is the intention of the council to have a new license, I would recommend that light, the alcohol stop being served at 10:00 p.m.
I just have a quick question for the chief, as long as he's up and online here. In terms of the 46 licenses, and I suppose any of the colleagues that I have up here might be able to entertain an answer to this question, but how does Bristol, how are we comparable to other towns? Are, is Warren like 35 or 36, or is a comparable town elsewhere in the state similar in terms of the number of licenses that we have? I understand, I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, but, you know, it might be something that we come back for with, with further research.
So, I can say, in, in my career, I've been tasked with completing two studies in 2011 and 2016, and it had to do specifically with that, the number of licenses. And at the time, I was asked to look at BV and BVL licenses. And 2011 and 2016, what I found was, of all the communities that I contacted, I contacted the clerk's office in 2016, it was actually 19 communities, and many of the communities in 2006 were below the allowable or decreasing the number of BVL limited licenses in 2016. So, but you mentioned the town of Warren, and in 2016, Warren had a maximum of seven BVL licenses. They had five issued, and they, in that year, they were anticipating decreasing the number to three issued. So, they did have available licenses, but again, they were not all accounted for. And again, looking at some other comparable towns, Smithfield, they had a BVL license. Again, they allowed for 14, but they had eight issued, and they were, again, decreasing to three. East Greenwich, they had six available, and again, they were looking to decrease the number that were issued to three. So, a lot of the communities, majority of the communities in 2016 were looking to lower the number of BVL limited licenses.
And that was, that was the, just the beer and wine, right?
Correct.
Okay. And we have five.
We have five, and we, I believe we voted on increasing to the six, yeah.
Is it requested for seven?
Chief, I appreciate those stats. My feeling is Classic Pizza's been around for 30-years. I think they've been a really good business. I feel we should give them the chance. I, my understanding is, I don't know if we necessarily have a problem with liquor in the town. I haven't personally been called or told that we have a major issue. So, my feeling is, I understand where you're coming from, but I, my understanding is, why don't we give it a try and do the trial period and kind of see how it goes? And as the chairman said, we'll reassess it, but that's just my feeling. I think we should give them a chance.
Well, I concur with giving them a chance, however, at the recommendation, I think it's a fair request, that the recommendation, the chief, to limit to 10:00 o'clock versus 11:00 o'clock.
Is there any other discussion?
Well, are, are the applicants amenable to the 10:00 o'clock?
Well, the other establishments on Medicom, do they follow that as well, or are they open till 1:00 to serve?
It depends on, on the establishment, and also, when we create a new license, we tend to have, we, in fact, there's a couple of other...
Limitations?
Yes, limitations, to make sure that there is no issues, and allowing a later time tends to make more issues. I'm not saying that's going to happen in your instance, but, and as we've talked about earlier, we're absolutely open to review. This would be November, it happens to be when the license is renewed, that's why we said November. Typically, it's a three-month review.
Okay.
And we look back, and we would request from the police chief and his department, has there been any issues? Has there been any? And he brought up a really good point, it's not necessarily at your establishment, but it's the surrounding area. So, you can not have an issue there at Classic Pizza, but that person goes out and then is, and we've had this discussion many times, particularly downtown, making extra noise or, you know...
I understand.
You got it. So, but absolutely happy to review it at that, for myself, and I also, I concur that I'm okay with 10:00 o'clock for this review period, a pretty short review period here, shorter than what we normally do. Happy to look at it again, and if it's appropriate to increase the hours, I would certainly be amenable to that. What do my colleagues think?
I think that... I think that many of the restaurants are not open that late. You know, many of the restaurant restaurants, I can't speak to all of the, you know, our clerk could look at the restrictions. I can't speak to all the pizza places, I don't know. But I mean, there's a lot of, if they're restaurants serving food, they're usually closing at like 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock completely. Some may be open a little bit late, later than that. But, you know, so I think, I think what happens, especially in the later part of the evening, you know, the police, there's only so much police power that we have, and, you know, they spend a good part of their night, the later part of the night, closing down the establishments, making sure people are out of there, making sure they're not, you know, doing chaos in the community. And that's pretty much what they do. And I think it's, I just think, I think that that's a good compromise, because I think it's really hard to, you know, once we allow one business, we have to, I feel like, let the others that are in a similar situation. But I think we have to be really careful about not keep opening these doors over and over and over again. And I know you're in a little different situation, because, you know, you have been around for a long time, and you have been here before, when you, at one point, you were going to open a regular restaurant. Am I correct, where you are now? So, but I think we always have to be aware of it, because at any given time, we've always got multiple liquor establishment requests for licenses, so. That's my view.
Is there any other discussion?
I guess, one of the questions I have is, how meaningful is that extra hour from the 10:00 o'clock to the 11:00 o'clock? Because I'm trying to get a sense of whether the public safety benefits or benefits of having the 10:00 o'clock outweigh in the, maybe that costs you as a business.
Well, yeah, I'm trying to think, too, like, you know, if you close at 10:00, so other places, what, they stop serving at 1:00? Is that going to prevent someone from coming to us, other than to that establishment? Because they have, you know, they can grab a beer with their meal? So, I don't...
It might, but it's, as we've talked about, it's definitely an interim period. And I'm thinking of the surrounding establishments. When I think of limited BVL licenses, I think of, like, for example, Ricotti's, right? They've served alcohol for quite a long time with zero issues, right? They close at 9:00. There's a, I don't know what time Bristol House of Pizza closes, but I know it's not 12:00.
Nacho Momas, too, is around 9:00.
Right, 9:00. So, just because it's not a Medicom, and the chief brought up another good point, again, it's, you happen to be there, but if everybody closes at 1:00, and there's an issue at your establishment, even though you've done everything you were supposed to, there was still a problem. Two officers are over there on making up numbers. Now, there's an issue down at the, in and around the area of Thame Street. Now, what happens? And we've got, we've got officers split over the town, and that's just assuming that there's no other problems at someone's home or something else. So, now, and again, I'm, I know the chief could probably speak much better than I can, but you get the gist, right?
Yeah, I got it.
So, I think when we kind of stagger those closing hours, too, it seems commensurate to a restaurant, in my head, at least, number one. And number two, it allows for the police department to be more targeted, and when issues arise, they're there and they're able to deal with them. But again, we also have, we're talking about liquor right now, we have a university which issues happen, that you've got a lot of people that live there, a lot of kids having, you know, other way.
They belong there, and I got you.
Exactly. So, we take, what we have is, I wouldn't say limited, I would say correct, but all of a sudden, it becomes limited when there's an issue and there's an issue. Chief, did I describe that well? Did I miss anything on that?
No, that's accurate.
Okay.
And just looking, running the numbers from 2013 to current time with Classic Pizza where they are today, it seems as if any type of complaint or incident that warranted police intervention did occur at 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, 1:57, 9:30, 10:41. So, they're all 9:00 and beyond. So, you know, again, 10:00 for stopping the serve of alcohol during this interim period would be my recommendation.
So, one more time, I think we're all absolutely okay with reviewing this, and when licenses renew, and as the clerk said, that would be in November. I'm happy to take a look at increasing those hours if everything else looks okay, and obviously, we lean heavily on the recommendations from the police department.
I think, I think, can I also make one other note?
Please.
I mean, I see a lot, over the, over the years, I've seen this real reliance, and I'm not blaming you on this at all. This is not really about you, this is just a general comment, on alcohol. Like, this is going to save everybody's business, this is going to make them more profitable, this is going to be good for local businesses, this is going to be good for economic development. I don't agree with all of that. I mean, I think if you're going to sell two beers in that extra hour, that's probably, and if that's what's going to make your business, you know, more competitive, I just don't believe that that's the case. And if these issues arise, because we didn't ask the chief, like, well, have there been issues at your establishment? And I'm sure a lot of it is just rowdy people who have gone from other bars and gotten pizza at your place. If you end up getting closed down for a day or two or three, you're going to lose a lot more revenue than what those few drinks are going to provide you. So, I think in a lot of ways, it's in your own benefit to keep it, to end that liquor service earlier. Because you don't need the people coming from somewhere else, going up there getting pizza, so they come in at like, you know, I'm not going to get into it, but you know, you know what I'm saying?
I got it.
I mean, because we have the power to also take away those licenses if there is a major issue. Unfortunately, I mean, thank God, there hasn't been too many major issues, there haven't been any of those license hearings here in a long time. But, I mean, it's something we have to be mindful of all the time. And we have so many licenses in a very, you know, you're not here, but downtown, very compact area. And, you know, and we got police now scattered. We just extended a license to a later time down on Thame Street more. You know what I mean? Like, everywhere we look is like liquor licenses everywhere. That's like the name of the game in Bristol. And I think some of that is okay. I don't necessarily agree with having a cap, because we take it case by case, and that means that value, you don't have a value in your liquor license. And I think that's a good thing, because you see these stories in some of the cities where they're being sold for half a million dollars. That is absolutely ridiculous. So, I mean, you know, there's pros and cons to the way we all do this, but I just get very frustrated with the liquor requests that come in. That's just me personally, and anybody who's watched knows that, so.
I'm just curious, does it go by population, or?
Totally at our call.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we base it off, actually, I'll step back and kind of reiterate the point that Mary made, which is, this is why we take so much time on this, because the ramifications of a poor decision are huge.
Yeah, it just takes one person.
Exactly. And what happens is that it's not just the police department, they're the first and most, no question, surrounding neighbors, and then all the issues that come from that, damage to property, and there's insurance premium changes.
Yeah, backfire.
It's all of these things that happen, and that wonderful name that we all try, and it's not the council or the administrator, it's everyone in Bristol, the Make Bristol a Beautiful Place. It doesn't take much for little things. This is not one license on Medicom Ave. that's going to make everything tip over, but you do get to a point where these challenges become so much, and we're okay right now, but we want to stay well within okay. And I think that these things will allow you to increase your business, but yet not affect the police department, your neighbors, and all of that. And then again, we'll review it. And if it's appropriate that it should be extended, we can take a look at it, and as I think we've all said clearly, we're happy to look at it again for you. So, what's this council's pleasure?
We have a motion, right?
I don't think we have a motion, so.
Well, I thought Tony made it.
Well, we had a motion to approve, but we did not get specific with the...
The time of closing.
Time of closing, for, time of liquor service stopping. Is 10:00 o'clock okay with everyone? And if not, please tell me otherwise.
Yep.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to approve with a 10:00 o'clock closing time to be reviewed when licenses renew in November.
Can I just say, we're not closing just that?
I apologize. Stopping liquor service, I apologize, because no, we're not asking to close at 10:00. So, is there any other discussion? Thank you for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is ordinance 2019-10. This is the second reading for adoption to amend the council rules concerning class, certain Class F liquor licenses.
Mr. Clerk, would you take a moment and share with everyone what this distinction is, why we're talking about it one more time, please?
Absolutely. Basically, what occurred many years ago, I believe it was 1977, is that the council delegated the responsibility to issue Class F liquor licenses to the clerk and the town administrator. It has been in place since that time. During the last legislative session, the General Assembly changed the law. That opened up the possibility of Class F liquor licenses to be provided to, beyond what was generally accepted for them, which was solely political organizations, religious organizations, and nonprofit organizations.
So, Mount Carmel Feast, or something along that line, would be a Class F?
Exactly. So, for, since 1977 and beforehand, those were the only Class F licenses that were issued. The new legislation allows for any corporation to apply for a Class F beer and wine or full liquor license for no particular reason, because they want to. Okay? And my feeling was that I no longer felt comfortable issuing those licenses, because there was sort of a set pattern of what had occurred for the, you know, past 40 years in terms of how those licenses were distributed. Now, there's a whole new class of individual businesses that can apply. We could, in fact, have 10 people, 10 businesses on the main street, one business right after the other, apply for a license for the same day, for example. And I wouldn't be comfortable issuing those licenses. And felt as though, because of the change of scope, that it's so dramatic, that the true authority does rest with the council, so that what this, what this ordinance does is it allows my office, in cooperation with the town administrator, to continue to issue the licenses that we've issued since 1977. But for this new class of license, or potential licensee, the council would have to take action on those.
So, those would be heard in public, and we would have discussion and recommendation and all of that? Okay.
And I might also point out that Class F is a 24-hour license. It's a temporary 24...
With a maximum in establishment can apply?
12 times in a year.
Thank you. Okay. Council's clear? What's the council's pleasure?
Is this the first, I'm sorry?
This is the second reading.
Second reading for adoption.
I move that we adopt the new ordinance and policy. I think it's reasonable. I don't think any of us want to see a bunch of businesses deciding to have liquor licenses for a day. I can see, I can already figure out what some of those days would be. And I think we should hear them, the council should hear them. And I do think for the traditional licenses where, you know, this feast or that feast, and this group or that group, I think that's fine for, you know, Lou and the clerk and the administrator to make that decision.
So, move.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item C3. This is ordinance 2019-11. This is the first reading to create a parking prohibited area on Bourne Street.
So, move.
Second. There's a motion and a second to constitute first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is 2019, ordinance 2019-11. And this would be to create yet another Class BV Limited license based upon the application of a, another restaurant establishment that would increase the number from six to seven. I don't know if you, do you want to get into the jurisdiction?
Yes, so, it has come to my attention this evening that the applicant for this license, Panonis, may be within 200 feet of a school. It's basically across the street from a school. And there's a Rhode Island general law that prohibits you, as the licensing authority, from issuing liquor licenses to any establishment within 200 feet of a school or a church. So, I think we, and the way they measure that is from basically the entrance of the building where the license, the license is being requested, to the edge of the property of the school or church.
Okay.
So, I think we need to have clarification as to whether they are within that 200-foot area or without. So, I would suggest that you continue this matter, and in the meantime, we will ask the applicant to bring to the clerk proof, if they can, that they are outside that 200-foot restriction that you're prohibited from acting on under state law.
So, I had reached out to the solicitor right before we walked in, and I appreciate the kindness there, and brought this to his attention, asked if he could get some clarity for us. As I was reviewing my packet yet again before the meeting, I saw this, and I thought of Leo's, because I recall there was special...
Special legislation, which allows them to have a license.
Which I think I sponsored, by the way.
That's how long ago that was, yeah.
And if that is the case here...
And there's a potential possibility.
...the applicant will go through that same process that they so desire.
State legislation?
State legislation, yeah.
Yeah, it's Title III, Chapter 7, Section 19 of the Rhode Island general laws.
So, we just need a motion to continue this, or refer to you?
Well, yeah, why don't you refer to me and the town clerk, so that we can work with the applicant? Because if, in fact, they cannot show they're within the 200 feet, they have to withdraw the application.
Motion to refer to the town solicitor and town clerk?
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Solicitor.
The next item is item D1, and this, D2, excuse me, and this is the petition of Carol Almonte for the PTG of Our Lady of Monte School requesting bingo license for November 1st, 2019. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, interim chief of police, and fire chief.
Motion to approve bingo license?
Second. There's a motion and a second to approves. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, item D3, is related to the previous discussion on the liquor license. So, perhaps that should also be referred to the clerk and the solicitor.
So, move.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item E1, and this is the application of Richard Corenti doing business as the Portside Tavern, 444 Thame Street. This, the council will recall, when the hours of operation were extended for the Portside Tavern, there was an agreement that they would have a three-month review. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, interim chief of police, and also the fire chief.
Chief, did you want to speak on this at all?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, with respect to the 90-day trial period, Lieutenant Wozni looked at cost of service to the establishment, and they are in good standing within those 90 days with regards to the extended hours. We'd just like to note that when this 90-day trial period was initiated, it was done so over our summer season here in Bristol. Roger Williams, I'd like to note that they are obviously back in town, and the students, let me just say that these liquor, these establishments that are open till 1:00 a.m., the age of the patrons at these establishments are more college-age individuals. So, it could potentially change as to the type of clientele that are going to visit the Portside from this point moving forward. I'm not saying it's going to, but it could potentially change. And Lieutenant Wozni wanted that to be noted, and if possible, extend, extend the probationary period to see if there's any change in the cost of service.
Mr. Clerk, our licenses, as we were talking about a little bit earlier, renew in November. Is it the beginning, the end, the middle? Do we...
It's whatever that meeting in November is, that you would be voting on it. We, it looks like it's November 20th.
Chief, is that, you believe that's enough time for an extended review to go to November 20th? Okay. What's this council's pleasure?
I make a motion that we extend it through that period.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to extend the review period through our license renewals? Did you want to share something, Ms.?
No, I thought the petition was to extend to 1:00 a.m. Right, right. So, yeah, my motion is...
They're already at 1:00 a.m. That was the whole thing in the summer.
You're going to allow them to stay open till 1:00 a.m. only until the renewal period, and then you'll decide then if you're going to continue on with that.
Well, I want to see the... Actually, can I just withdraw my second? Because I don't even think they should have ever been open till 1:00.
Tell you what, if we have a second there, it's certainly discussion time, so please. If you would prefer to withdraw your second, we can...
Yeah, yeah, I do. Because, I mean, I agree that we, they should have a better, that we should see what the impact of students are. I agree with the police department on that, except that I would vote no to keep them open, because I don't really think they should have been open till 1:00.
Let me stop you right there. And so, we had a withdrawn second. Is there a different second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
For discussion, please.
For discussion.
All right, now, Mary, please, continue.
No, I just said, and I agree with the 1 o'clock thing, for all the reasons we talked about earlier, and just moving police presence down that street further at that time. It's a really hectic time, and we all hear the ramifications of everything that's going on if you're anywhere in the downtown vicinity at 1:00 in the morning.
Chief, could you... Let's, actually, let's talk about that specifically. Is there, has there been issues? And Mary's talking about a larger issue. I'm not saying specific to, but my question is specifically to Portside. Has there been issues there since they've been open to 1?
As I stated, specific to the establishment?
Right.
No.
But that's, that's not, that's not taking away Mary's point.
That's not my question. My point was more about you have, you have to worry about that establishment while you're already concentrating at this end.
And again, as I stated, the quality of life issues, we'll never know exactly, Chief... With the quality of life issues, we'll never know exactly the individuals we deal with, where they're coming from unless we poll them while we're dealing with them. But that's kind of impossible to do when they're intoxicated. Hey, where'd you come from?
Sure.
So, we respond, we take care of the situation, we move them along as quickly as possible to keep it quiet, so the residents in the downtown area can go back to bed in a peaceful manner. And again, it's, to say that one particular establishment or the Portside, we're dealing with individuals coming from there further down the street, it's, we'll never know. But specific to the actual location, no, there had been no incidents in the 90-day period.
So, Chairman, based on the recommendation, the motion on the floor is to continue, continue for three months with the 1:00 a.m. opening?
Yeah, so the review period through the renewal of the licenses in our November meeting.
Great.
Okay, another 90-day...
Yep.
It's not a 90, it's less than that, but yes.
November 20th meeting.
Review period. But maybe from, maybe next time...
Two months.
What we ought to do is, you know, see this kind of coming, though, right? And then, at the outset, just give them a 90-day review period if we know that the university's going to be an issue or something.
I think that's an excellent point. I think it's an excellent point. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm just abstaining on that vote, please.
So, we have four in favor, one abstention.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is Item F1. This is the petition of Catherine, August 41, River Street, requests council consideration of three-way stop intersection at River and Francine Streets.
Please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would refer this to the town administrator to work with the police chief and the director of Public Works and come back with a recommendation.
Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second, and definitely interested in, you know, a traffic study on this one or something more concrete to know whether it's relative.
So, what I can say that with a three- or four-way stop sign, as I've stated before in front of the council, there's the uniform manual on traffic control devices where it comes to three- or four-way stop sign intersections. So, it would have to meet the criteria to put a stop sign there based on traffic volume, traffic accidents, and just off the top of my head, I can tell you that there's probably little to no accidents at that intersection. And looking at the town code 16-122 through streets designated, River Street is considered a through street, and all streets coming into River Street are considered stops. So, at this point, Francine Street would be considered a stop intersection. I did drive down there, there is no stop sign. So, I believe just, you know, at this point, a stop sign could just be erected based on the ordinance on Francine Street.
Just for a point of clarity, so what you just said was, is that it wouldn't require a new ordinance? The current ordinance is a blanket one that would cover an issue like this?
Just to put a stop sign on Francine at this point, River is considered a throughway, and Francine is already under the ordinance as a stop street for River. Again, there is not a stop sign on Francine at River at this point.
So, the motion and the second was to refer to the administrator and you, the chief. You're suggesting that we put in that stop sign and then review once that stop sign is in? How much time do you believe is appropriate to come back with information of this council in regards to what you found out?
Usually, a traffic study, when we put the traffic trailer out, we do one week in one-direction traffic, one week on the other side of traffic. So, that's two weeks there, and to get the accident data, it's, for this intersection, very quick.
So, at our, in three weeks, our next meeting, is that an appropriate time, or would you prefer it at the following one?
The police department can get it done at the next meeting, but to have the additional time would probably benefit.
But don't you need to sign up first before you can do this experiment? Like, it depends on how soon Public Works is going to get that sign up.
So, tell you what, to give you the time that you need, so there's no worries about that, why don't we, if everyone's amenable to it, we can shoot for, not our next meeting, but the following one, which would be...
October 30th.
Thank you very much. October 30th?
That's fine.
Mr. Chairman, as I'm listening to the whole discussion with the chief presented, I'm not so sure that we, no, that we're a little bit stuck in the mud here, in a way. If we install the sign, I think that somewhat addresses, part of the issue, as I'm reading through this, and then a future date, we could come back. But I don't think we need to go through so much effort in order to come back with a recommendation in the future. You know, I would just say, that would be my, my suggestion would be to install the sign. Let's monitor the situation in the area. Then, if it becomes an issue, then let's bring it back.
So, the motion from you was to refer, but obviously with new information? Would you like to withdraw?
Yes, I would.
Okay. So, the new motion would be...
The new motion would be to install the stop sign, monitor the intersection, and then a future date, if it's a problem, to come back to the council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Nice, clean white. Thank you.
The next item is from Jennifer Cavallaro, doing business as Beehive Cafe, 10 Franklin Street, requests council consideration to create new Class BV liquor license. The Beehive Cafe currently has a BV-L or BV Limited license.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Jen Cavallaro, the Beehive Cafe.
Share with us the request, if you would.
We have several reasons for wanting to go for a full liquor license. One of them is that the dinner environment is very competitive, and we feel that during the day, we're very, very busy, because we're basically, there's not much that's like us in Bristol, but at night, it's a different thing. We're competing with every other restaurant. Portside around the corner now, and all the other restaurants on the three days that we're open. So, we wanted to sort of level the playing field, and we do attract quite a lot of people who might like a limited cocktail menu with our food. We also get continuous requests for brunch on Saturday and Sunday for people to have a cocktail with their brunch. And it's just a repeated theme all day long, so we just thought we would go for it. We're not planning to put in a bar or change the physical layout or the hours or really do anything different at all, other than to have a very limited, we don't have room for a whole bar anyway, so a very limited cocktail list and offering that, and that's it, really. We're sort of hoping that we can get ahead of what might be coming next year with the bridge project also, just trying to keep our revenue up. But we're not going to stay open past 9:00. Nothing's changing.
When do you currently close?
9:00 p.m. On just Thursday, Friday, Saturday. The rest of the week, it's 4:00 p.m.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday at 9:00?
9:00, yeah.
And as far as sales go, you think this will generate quite a bit more sales for you to kind of...
The research I've done with a couple of other restaurants in the area, people I know, is that it adds $2 to $4 a head, and that's significant for us.
Yeah.
There really is a significant amount of money, honestly.
A lot of money, yeah.
If it's per head at night, you know, that's a, that's a significant amount. I think also for brunch, you know, Bloody Marys or whatever, it just adds.
Mimosa's, Bloody Marys, yep.
Yeah. And, you know, everything's gone up, the price of payroll's up, you know, you're just trying to constantly evolve so that you can keep giving more to your customers, not less, and keep up with the environment. I mean, I never thought I'd do online ordering, but I do, because that's, you just have to keep up with what's happening out there. And I think, much as I actually like having Portside around the corner, it's been a little, you know, we've got to keep up with the, keep up with the Joneses.
Oh, the Corentis, as it were.
Oh, the Corentis, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I couldn't blame him, yeah.
I guess the question I had when I, when I read this was, I was just trying to get a sense of the type of menu of drinks that you'd be having. I instantly thought, okay, they're thinking like Bloody Marys here and stuff like that with breakfast, or in the late afternoon, or with a brunch, or something like that.
Yeah.
But it'll be kind of like one of those specialty cocktail menus or something like that.
We'll devise some interesting cocktails to go with our food in the evening.
Yeah, the Bloody Mary with the big piece of pizza in it or something like that.
Sunday, Sunday.
Yeah, exactly. So, that's, it's just part of evolving as a business, really.
So, Mr. Clerk and Mr. Solicitor, just for a clarity question here, is if this council believes that they'd like to entertain this idea, it would require referring it to both of you to create an ordinance, to create a new BV, and also to remove one BV Limited, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So, if this council believes that that's what they'd like to do, then our next appropriate step would refer this to create an ordinance to have the solicitor start with that work?
Well, Beehive has been a great business in town, and we believe in you, and we want to, I believe, you know, I think we all do, we want you to stay in town, and we want you to stay competitive. So, I'll make a motion to refer this to the town solicitor to draft a ordinance to create a new Class BV liquor license.
And to remove one BV Limited if, in fact, we go that full direction, right?
And to remove, yep.
We might as well have them run concurrently. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Oh, I have a discussion. I'm sorry. Can you please speak to, so will all of your, you know, if you're not going to have a bar, will all of your waitstaff then be tip-certified, or who will be mixing the drinks?
They have to be, they have to be anyway, because they all...
Oh, because you have the wine and beer.
Yeah, so they all have to be...
So, who's going to be mixing the drinks, then? Would they all be mixing their own?
They'll be most, yeah, the way that it operates is that whoever's, whoever takes the order usually does the mixing and the carrying to the table. It depends on how the flow is. When the food's up, someone runs the food, the other person will do the drinks. We don't operate with a normal restaurant system where people have their own tables that only they look after. A lot of times, it's kind of a rolling thing.
So, you wouldn't be, you'd have to be at a table service to get this drink? I mean, in other words, like, when you go in and you order, like, your breakfast, let's say?
Right.
Would you be ordering a mimosa with that, or would you, would somebody else take that order?
No, it would be, if it's during the day, you would be ordering at the counter, and it would be brought to you.
And then, at night, it would be like table service?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we still, yeah, we always bring the drinks.
Yeah. So, you have to sit down, you have to order some food to get your drink, to make sure you're at that 60-40.
At night, yeah.
Yep.
Chief, could you give me clarity on something, just because Mary brought up a good point? Is there any difference in certification, tip certification, for a bartender versus a waitstaff person?
No. No.
Great. Well, that's clear. Okay.
I have to say, you know, you heard my comments earlier, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I just get so frustrated by this. I was probably more frustrated at them because of this request in front of us. I mean, I understand the competitive nature, I understand restaurants like yours. I mean, there are several that I can name off the top of my head that don't do a big-bar business, but they have those drinks available. I think I was most taken aback, I have to be honest with you, about the comment about the bridge, and to try to up the revenue before the bridge project happens. I mean, I think that is, I've always been frustrated by this being our means of economic development, and I don't, I'm not saying you're saying that, but it bothers me that it's all about, you know, this is going to open the door now to potentially other BV Limited places coming in for, well, now we need to be competitive, even though you're not a pizza place, you're more of like a dinner place on those nights. And that's all we ever hear, is I need to be competitive. Somebody might want to drink with my lunch, somebody might want a beer with my pizza, somebody, it's always about that. And yes, we want to make everybody competitive, but in the same token, we're just, it's all about liquor establishments, and it just gets very frustrating to me, I have to be honest with you. You know, I mean, actually, I don't, let me just double-check this. When I read this, I automatically thought it was going to be about the brunches, the Bloody Marys, the Mimosa's.
And that's the majority of...
And then, I didn't even see that, I didn't, unless I missed it, I didn't even see that in here. I just saw the thing about the dinner, and then I saw about the bridge project. I mean, that just blew my mind, to be honest with you.
Why would it?
It just bothers me, you know? I mean, I think, I think we want, I don't want to get off the topic on the bridge project, but I just think there's a lot of other things that we all should be doing, including the businesses, to help mitigate that impact. This, the liquor that you want to serve with your meals is one issue, but in, you know, as you said, it brings so much dollars per head in. But I just, I just find it's like, it's just something that bothers me, it always has. I just, you know, it's, and I, and I just have to say it, I just, you know, and so, I was just disturbed by it, that it's always about, because I know exactly what's going to happen, Jen, because it's going to be, we're going to approve this, and then there's going to be another rash of BV Limited licensees coming in and saying, I need to be competitive. And now, we've opened the door to, you know, to this, to this restaurant doing in this fashion. Now, if you had asked for it in the very beginning, I'm not really sure what people would have thought. Like I said, I go to plenty of places that have those. I'm not a big drinker, but I see plenty of places that have those. I don't see a lot of people, you know, drinking. I mean, hopefully, your place is so busy on a Sunday morning with their lines outside, hopefully, people are going to have a drink and leave, not going to linger even long, you know, even longer. I mean, I don't know if they want them to or not.
No, I don't think so.
I know that's the profit margin. I mean, I, from what I hear in the restaurant business, the food is not that much profitable. It's all like the drinks, the desserts, you know, the appetizers, it's all, you know, drinks. When you're starting having, you know, a drink for $12, $15, that's a lot of money, you know?
So, I, to that end...
Yeah, can I make a comment about the...
Just one sec. To that end, the, I think we could probably, and it's a really good point, is that maybe we can follow suit to what zoning boards do and have some findings of fact here. For myself, and it was already pointed out, and I asked it earlier, was the 9:00 p.m. is kind of what got me, and it was Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. It's not any later than that, which really speaks to the earlier point that we were talking about with other restaurants closing. It's a staggered effect. We don't have our police department, we don't have all of these people that, there's that critical mass that happens when X amount of people are walking in the street, out of cars, into cars, and all of that. So, for myself, that finding of fact, if we were to play zoning board for a moment and say that 9:00 p.m. was a critical issue for me, meaning a positive critical issue. So I was, and part two is that you already have a limited BV license, so I think if it didn't exist at all, I don't think I would be there at all. But because you've already had it, and remind me, is it eight years that you've had it?
Yeah, two thousand and ten, I think it was.
So nine years.
Yeah.
And Chief, just, I, this was not part of the agenda to have a recommendation from you, at least at this point, but are you aware of any issues from, from the Beehive?
None, zero.
Okay, all right. So the findings of fact are no issue for nine years, you have a license already, you close at nine o'clock on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, those things get me over the hump to a positive, for myself. So I think Mary brought up some valid points, that it's, there is a point where we're going to go too much, and then it's so difficult to pull those reins back, once the horse has left the barn, you've heard a million of them, right? So, but I don't think this does this, I think this stays well within because of all the things that we've already talked about. So unless there's something else from this council, is there any other discussion?
Could I make a comment?
Yes.
This is not about myself, but in general, that what I've noticed in small towns everywhere, and I mean everywhere here and in Europe, is what's getting people out of their houses, and what's bringing community into downtown areas in general, is food, alcohol, massage, nails, services that you can't get on the internet. Retail is struggling, and we're not going to be able to fix that. So although I know what you're saying, and nobody wants to have a Newport, downtown Newport on a Saturday night kind of situation in Bristol, but I think, and this has nothing to do with just me personally, we have to understand that that's what is making community everywhere in the world now, because the supermarkets are out of town, the post offices are out of town, the retail's out of town or online, and what's getting people out of their homes is where they can socialize. So the heart of small towns is really built now around services and alcohol and food, whether we like it or not, and that's where the tax base is, in my opinion.
Well, I think that, I understand that, you know, there's a big foodie culture in, in, in high quality food in restaurants, I mean, I spent a lot of money in doing that myself. But I do think that, and I've said this about other establishments and other issues in the downtown area, that's all true, and you're closing at nine o'clock, you know, people aren't coming out yelling and screaming drunk from your restaurant.
No.
Right?
But there is a problem in downtown Bristol that can't be denied on certain nights of the week with the college kids and everybody else. You can hear it blocks and blocks away. And, you know, we keep eroding, like, we forget that there's also neighborhood in the downtown, and people forget that, and I mean, I, we had, I brought this up last meeting about another topic, I think it was about the, the run, you know, the Fourth of July run.
Music before the run, yes.
I mean, people live in these areas, and we just can't keep loading them down just because that's good for, you know, those establishments, or getting people out of the house, we can't, we, we are charged with being careful, and I'm not talking about your establishment, I have no doubt the quality of what you do. It's just, it's just opening these doors up constantly and looking at this, eventually, like, no, it's not, it's not always going to be okay to, like, we're not going to put all bars downtown Bristol, and that's not what you're asking, I totally understand that. But I mean, just because that's the way of the future, that's what they're doing in other places, and it's a service-driven industry, well, no, we're charged with making sure that that doesn't get out of control, that we don't end up like Newport or certain neighborhoods in Providence at one, two in the morning. And on certain nights, it already is like that in some of these areas. So I do get a little bit upset when people talk about that, because a lot of people who talk about it don't live in here, don't live in the middle of it. And, you know, when you say you haven't heard from people, I hear from people, I can hear, I, I go to bed like two, two or three in the morning, it doesn't faze me too much, I'm not a big sleeper, but let me tell you, I can hear people all over the place, the windows open, whether it's the party house down the street, or whether it's the kids coming up from the, you know, from downtown on Thursday nights, and I feel bad for the people that are in bed, you know, and it's, it's not fair, because we're all taxpayers. Your business taxpayer, and the residents are taxpayers as well, and, and we have, we are charged with watching out with what goes into these, into the downtown, so nothing gets me more frustrated than this conversation. And when people just say, hey, great economic development, hey, just going to get money, hey, this is what we do, this is what we want to bring in, no, it's not, it's certain businesses, we want nice restaurants, nice establishments, we're not, what, do we really want, I don't think it's your intention or anybody else's, people to be just walking around like, hey, let's go grab drinks and just, you know, be drunk walking around the whole street and creating havoc, I mean, what's next, you know? We have to be careful. I'm sorry, I get on a rant on this because it really, really bothers me.
Understood. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm just, I'm just, I'm going to go, I'm going to oppose, I'm going not to oppose, I'm going to abstain on this vote, and then I will think about the, like, when we actually vote on the license, because I know your, I know what your establishment is, I'm just concerned about all the other people are going to come, like, the door keeps getting opened and opened and opened.
Thank you.
Got that, Lou?
Yep.
Good enough?
I do.
Glad.
Think we're through the alcohol.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is the petition of Kevin E. Jordan, President of Edgewater condominium association, two twenty-one Hope Street, request for no parking space both north and south of driveway, there's a recommendation provided by the Town Administrator and interim Chief of Police, and also a lay-out and recommendation from the Department of Public Works.
So it's my understanding that this, this is, I actually thought it was the other condo when I had to look at it again, because this was, this was a recent conversation, a few years ago, and it's my recollection after speaking with the Administrator and the Chief, that last time this happened, we referred it to the Administrator and the Chief to then have it go to the State Traffic Commission, which then they determine that they don't need to weigh in on it, give us authorization to make adjustments to that. Am I correct? Do I have that timeline, excuse me, line correct? So it has to go up to the State Traffic Commission, then come back down to us, and then we can take the next step on it? Is that correct? Do I have that right?
That is correct. It's a state road, so we need, they need to grant us, per se, the authority to regulate traffic there.
So currently there's a south, the south portion of this is already no parking, this would just be the northbound portion that would require some striping. Am I correct with that? Okay, all right. I just wanted some clarity there. What's this council's?
A motion to refer to the Town Administrator and Chief of Police to submit this request to the Rhode Island State Traffic Commission.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any other discussion?
Just, just very good, but you're right on target, you know, as it was clarified, I recall when we had to do the parking boxes on Hope Street, we had to go through the same process, you know, we had to submit it to the Traffic Commission, they authorized, then eventually the boxes were in, I mean, the parking spaces were installed.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Oh, really? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And finally, you have item F four, and this is the petition of Dorothy Canario, seventeen Milk Street, request council consideration for a curb cut and no parking area across from driveway, you have recommendation provided by the Town Administrator and interim Chief of Police.
So typically, these curb cuts don't come in front of this council, it's here because of the no parking. It would seem to me, after, again, speaking with the Administrator and the Chief, it would be appropriate, if this council agrees, that we would say yes to the no parking, but not have the no parking installed until the curb cut was complete.
That makes sense.
What's my counsel, what's the, my colleagues' thoughts?
Mr. Chairman?
Of course.
Just a, just a point of clarification for the council.
I did look at this site yesterday, there won't be any actual execution.
So minimal, you'd be able to drive over, since they put their driveway in, so there wouldn't be a requirement, install, actually, all the driveway.
So it's your recommendation that we go ahead and say to the no, if we believe it's correct, that we say that it would be contingent on the driveway being installed first?
Right, I had submitted a letter to the Administrator that went in yesterday, I was away the previous two weeks. I concur with the, the curb cut, and I also concur with the no parking to be a step, once we determine, I work with the police department to figure out the, on that no parking.
Just, will the council recall that those no parking areas require an ordinance?
Right. So this council would then need to refer this to the Solicitor and Clerk to draft an ordinance, correct? With those, with those parameters in mind of having the driveway installed first before that is completed.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is the item G one, this is your public service appointment section, you have a recommended membership list for the Fourth of July Committee for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the Solicitor. My, my daughter's on that list, do I have to recuse myself?
Yeah, you should recuse, absolutely.
Okay.
Motion to approve as stated.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome back, Tony.
I was going to go for a walk.
We can drag that on for 10 minutes if you need to get a drink of water, if you have, all right.
The, the next item is the, first item under all business, this is item H one, and this was continued from July seventeenth, it concerns the petition of Chip Cavallaro and Stephen Bridgety, both providing the address of ten Franklin Street, request for a solution to the termination of commercial trash removal. You have a memorandum provided by the Public Works Director concerning same.
Mr. Administrator, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I'll just follow up, I know we had some discussion at one of our most recent meetings of the Town Council, but after looking at the data, I concur with the Director's recommendation, and that would be, once the town initiates and implements the automated trash and recycling pickup, which is set for January.
First quarter, kind of?
Yeah. The trucks.
That's kind of a moving target, but that's a, a good general, general idea at this point, from the best.
We'll call it first quarter is a good, okay.
As outlined in the report from the Director, each resident would receive one trash and one recycling cart, they're large carts, approximately ninety-six, or ninety-five or ninety-six gallons each. We, our recommendation would be that we also provide a mirrored policy for businesses, so the business would also receive one trash, one recycling cart. The difference would be, it would be at their expense to purchase them upfront, but the town of Bristol would pick them up. So it's, the businesses would be treated as equals with the, the homeowners, that would, that would be our recommendation.
The guess for, the guess for the cost of per bin is, in around the hundred and fifty zone, am I correct with that?
It's hard to put my finger on it, because I don't know the total number just yet, once I place the order, I can give you an average, but figure around a hundred to a hundred and ten dollars, something in that area.
So I'm going to use a higher one, and I hope it's lower, just so we can set our correct expectation.
Correct.
Okay.
And I have a question for the Administrator, if that's fine.
Of course.
Or the Director. The bins that they're able to purchase, is it just the businesses that are currently getting the town pickup, or is it all of them?
No, to be fair, we would, we would open it up to any business that wants to mirror the residential policy, they could go to DPW, there's an application, the bins are then, there's a barcode on them, so they're, they're tracked, and they would have to pay, pay for them, and it'd be for any business. So, but to be fair, to be fair to all businesses, anyone, any business, they would have the same treatment as a resident, as long as they pay for the, the cost of the barrel upfront, or barrels.
Okay. And then the, just to follow up on my last question, I noticed that the residents can also purchase an additional bear, card if they want, will the businesses also be able to do two cards, or just?
Yeah, it would, it would mirror the residences.
So, point of clarity on that, is that it was, residents can buy an actual, the proposed in this policy is an extra recycling bin, correct? Or was it both?
Both.
Okay. So that's actually, I don't agree with that, so I, just for, and we seem to have a little bit of question on that. It was my understanding, the red eye, the way I read it, it was one trash bin and one recycling bin will be, will be supplied to our residents, it was proposed that businesses could purchase one bin, they don't have to, but they can, to take advantage of the town trash pickup, one trash bin, one recycle bin, and then both resident and a business, if they recycle a lot, which is great, then they could buy an extra, did I misunderstand that? Okay, could you give me clarity?
I would just refer you to the final paragraph of my memo, which is the bottom line up front, my recommendation, and I think if you look in there, it states if the resident wishes, they may purchase at their own expense one additional trash cart. What we found, and I think Councilman Lake can back me up on this, is the volume of recycling is about twice what we have in the twenty-two gallon bins, which brings, I think it was thirty-four, thirty-five gallons average per resident, the ninety-five gallon is going to give them plenty of space or volume for the recycling. It's the trash, a lot of folks, obviously growing families or whatever, generate more trash, which would require an additional trash barrel, and that's why that statement is in that, my recommendation in my memo.
And it seems like a lot, it would be, there, there is a cost of getting the additional trash barrels, so if they want the ninety-six gallons, they'll be paying over a hundred dollars for it, which is like a ten dollar a month, or, well, over.
Right, but I mean.
Thirty-year warranty on the, on the bins, right?
Correct, but if you look at our current policy, it affords or allows for up to four thirty-gallon bins per residence.
Okay.
And I will tell you that there are residents that, you know, far exceed that, so we want to be able to take care of the trash generated. Okay, I don't think that there's a problem with a ninety-five gallon recycling bin relative to the volume generated. It's the trash that I would be concerned about, to make sure that we collect it properly. So I would, as I stated in my memo, afford them the opportunity, if they generate enough trash, if they want to buy a second trash bin, then they should be able to do that.
And you're also proposing that the, it would, the business would mirror, your proposal is that it would, it would mirror that, so a business could buy two trash bins? Because that's not the way I, that was not my understanding with the.
Yeah, I just want to, and, and again, I didn't, I don't concur with the two trash, that right now, the DPW's policy is four thirty-gallon bins per residence.
Correct.
A ninety-five gallon, that's, that's, that's three trash cans, if you add another cart, that's a hundred and ninety gallons of trash.
Wow, that's quite a bit.
So I would hold, if I were to vote on this, I would say one trash cart, one recycling, with the option of purchasing a second recycling cart.
Second recycling.
We're going to, we're going to increase the amount of trash that we're accepting from a residence, and.
And that's not the goal.
I think that's not the direction we should be going, it should be going into recycling.
I just want to say to the DPW Director, thank you very much for this analysis, it helps, and I think the residents need to understand that the cost of trash tonnage has gone up significantly, from thirty-two dollars a ton to forty-seven, and we've exceeded our cap every year, which we get charged at eighty dollars a ton, so it's a tremendous amount of money. So I think the one to one ratio of cutting back on commercial tremendously out of that eight hundred tons, I think will hopefully curb that escalating costs that are going up. So I would occur with that.
We don't know how far those are going to go up, they're going to keep going up.
Oh, I mean, the costs of trash are going to keep going up, but I mean, we're, we're not picking up eight to nine bins for a business.
Right, yeah.
If you take a quick look at the data, it shows that we exceed our cap by about twelve hundred tons a year, average.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we.
So that would, the majority of that is commercial pickup? Or, that's not a fair way of doing that, I'm sorry, commercial pickup brings us twelve hundred tons over.
Well, that in addition to what we bring in the door, transfer station for commercial accounts, it's, it's not just the pickup.
Thank you.
I want to make that clear.
No, that's a good point, thank you.
And I'd also like to point out, too, that this memo that we're discussing tonight was the same memo that I had discussed at our previous meeting, so there were no changes between the last discussion and what you have in front of you this evening. It's just that you have the memo this.
We have it this time.
It's a good thing.
We're a big fan of having it, yeah, so.
Could I just mention, Kevin, you had mentioned, I know at the last discussion, you know, there were, you know, there were like, three businesses in particular, three restaurants in particular, that you mentioned, that, you know, picking up a lot of trash. And in the issue, I think as Steve and Chip raised, was, you know, we just want an answer. We want to know what we can do. And shortly after, I had given this information to Steve, I don't know if he recalled it or not, but shortly afterwards, after the discussion last time, I happened to be in Nacho Mama's, and I noticed that they had all of their bins with, I forgot which company it was. And I, you know, the owner was there, and I asked him about it. And he was, he had been, switched over for about a year, he had told me. And that he, it seemed to me, I don't know your business, but it seemed to be a reasonable price per month that he was paying. And I said, well, you know, I hope, and that's when I had called Steve, if, if the other two establishments that have a real issue, because they don't have the space on their property, you know, were to go together and see if they could even get a better deal. I don't know if anyone has had a chance to talk to the owner of Nacho Mama's about that, but, you know, just what his experience has been. But as of that point, he said it was, it was going pretty well. And this, so this was a couple of months ago, shortly after we had our discussion here.
I went there, excuse me, I went there today to find out some more information. It is Waste Management that picks up, they have four. They store them in their driveway, they're in plain sight. I asked about costs to the manager, she wasn't able to give me that information. So I hope to speak to the owner itself. But can I get just a little clarification? Residents and businesses would be entitled to one trash and one recycling bin each. And we have the option of purchasing additional ones.
An additional recycling, well, I'm sorry, that has been part of the discussion. It was proposed in Kevin's memo, that it would be one and one. You've heard from the Administrator, and actually from myself, that one trash and one recycling, I think is more appropriate. But, yeah, I hope that gives you clarity.
Yes. And in our case, we have five businesses in the building. So we would be receiving, you know, for each business, a separate one. And that, that might really assist us. And come January, the first quarter, when this new bin system goes into place, you'll still be able to pick up at our curbside, these, these bins, like residents and businesses. And I think that is a very fine solution. Jen, I don't know if she wants to add something.
Mr. Administrator, did you want to, it looked like you wanted to share something. But absolutely, you can.
No, I'd just like to echo my recommendation again. And I know the, and there is some discussion, and the Director by ordinance has the autonomy to set policy on this. But my recommendation would be to mirror the residents. That would be one trash, one recycling. These are large carts, 95 gallons each. The only difference is the businesses would have to pay for them upfront. And if a resident or a business wants a second recycling cart, they can do that at their cost. They have to, they have to purchase it, and we'll pick them up. So in Mr. Bridgity's case, where he has five tenants, or if there's a multifamily unit, a residence, we could pick up to, you said there's five units there, we would pick up five trash and up to 10 recycling a week. And again, remember, any business can go to the transfer station and drop, they can drop, they can get a commercial account for trash, and recycling is free, if you want, if they want to self-deliver. And there are other options. We're learning there are other options with private haulers. So you could do, you could essentially do a mix. One day a week, if the DPW picks up on Wednesdays, you do the two, you do your trash and recycling with the town, and then later on in the week, you might want to have a private hauler pick up other trash. So this.
I think it'll work out. I know Chip takes the trash independently also to our, our station here, and as well as the town. And having five at our, at our building, I think will take care of, take care of things. And as we have excess, we'll dispose of it. I want to thank you. I, I'm still unclear, do we pay for the first bin as a business? Or do we receive that?
For the businesses, it would be at the sole cost of the business. So there are no free bins for the businesses. That's what's being proposed here.
You'd have to pay.
If a business, and in fact, that leads me to a question. If a business wants to take advantage of town trash pickup, they will need to purchase a bin from the town at their cost. A resident will not. A resident will get one bin and one barrel. That'll be included on that. But before we go any farther, a point of clarity, Kevin, you've said a couple of times, you're not sure how many bins you need to buy. Can I assume that you have some kind of timeline, that you'll need businesses to commit to purchasing?
Well, I can make some assumptions, you know, based on what we're doing today for collection. And, and based on the manufacturer's recommendation, we had talked about a percentage over what we believe we need for that factor. So I'm in good shape right now. I don't need answers tonight for, for me to do, go forward with what I need to do. And that's to actually execute the contract with the bin ordering piece, which I've been holding off on until we figure out what direction we're going. As of right now, I know what I need to do based on the discussion tonight.
As long as we're.
Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
As long as we're on the topic, can I just ask the Director one more question? I know that we're going with the 96. And I'm just going to throw the possibility out there. What if, you know, they are a little bit big. They have the same footprint as the 22 gallon bin. So it doesn't take up as much floor space. But let's say that somebody does not like the size of it, or something like that. Is it possible, any of the 64 would be a possibility?
I haven't, I have not cost estimated, nor estimated the numbers of smaller bins.
Okay.
It was the 95s.
Or I mean, like.
Going forward. And the footprint is, is really, it's actually narrower than a 30 gallon bin, if you believe it or not.
Yeah.
And that was one of the manufacturer's points that he made, was take a look at the footprint on the ground when you put them together. You know what I mean? And then the other thing, too, is the 95 gallon, you know, obviously, if we get to the point where we determine it, we can actually execute recycling every other week, then that's a plus in the long run, you know? So that's what, there are short term and long term goals. First, obviously, is to get to the automation, and iron out any of the things that we just don't know at this point in time with a collection piece. Then, once we get down the road, we can further assess where we are, whether it be commercial trash collection, or whether it be, you know, going to every other week on the recycling collection, make those adjustments going forward.
I guess, one of my, my question is, is the, are the trucks designed to be able to pick up a 64 gallon, or an 95?
The arm can handle it. I mean, it's, yes.
Okay. I'm not asking to go for the 64, but I just didn't know if there's a possibility of, you know, when this is all said and done, being able to buy 164 gallon.
And we may be able to do that, Councilman. I mean, I don't see that as a prohibiting element in the decision going forward. So it's a good point to make. I mean, right now, we're going to transition over 9,000 various entities going forward with both trash and recycling. So it's a big hurdle we're going to get over here within the next nine months.
And I always just had a question on tracking. So the business, the business would get one bin, one recycling bin. How do we make sure that they aren't using, dumping in other, other businesses' bins as well? You know what I mean? Is there a way to, do we have a barcode? There's no tracking on the bins?
I don't, I'm not sure. That, they'll, what'll happen is that, I'm thinking about putting in an RFID tag on these, which is above and beyond the barcode. The barcode will give an address, location, and the number of the bin, or the barrel. So that if somebody loses one, and we detect it down the road, being picked up somewhere else, we can locate that.
Kevin, tell everybody what an RFID chip is.
RFID chip gives you a little bit more specific information on, on the card itself.
Kind of a load jack for trash?
Yeah, kind of.
Okay.
And to be honest with you, I mean, I've got data that shows other municipalities, like the city of Taunton, went to the RFID code, and they've been saving money on these bins, because they've been located, or, you know, things of that nature.
Okay.
So, and I can get into that down the road. The thing for me tonight is to figure out how many we need to order, so I can place that order, so they can start the manufacture process. And my plan also, just to brief you real quickly, since we're on the discussion of carts, I decided that it was in the best interest of cost savings to go with one color, which is a forest green, with the light blue cover for the recycle. That way, it's one cart order, and then I'm only ordering covers. It just saves money in the long run, rather than manufacturing a light blue recycling cart.
Yep.
And then dark forest green trash cart.
Makes sense.
So the covers are the only difference?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And that's, that's the safe cost in the long run.
Just ask like, one quick question, though, on the businesses on the recycling end. So some of them have a lot of recycling, you know, you see it out during their trash days. And that's, you know, hopefully, it's not as good of a deal, but it's to our benefit to pick that up. I mean, are we going to let them, would you consider like, letting them get three, if you need it? Like, you're saying that these are so big that, that they may not need as much stuff out there. But, you know, some of it is boxes, whatever the case may be. I mean, I know they have to be, break them all up, but.
Yeah, I know this question's about why do we have to break down the cardboard and all that. Bottom line is, has an impact on the truck, and the compaction device within the truck. That's one. And two, when we go to the larger bins, again, we've got to be careful about cross-contamination. So, you know, right now, we actually visually inspect 100% of our recycling bins. So we literally have, we don't get fined at all, because it's a single, the guy's lifting all these bins all day long. We'll be getting away from that. But in order to counteract that, we have cameras in the truck to visually inspect as they go in the harbor. So if we detect contamination, two things will happen. One, that homeowner or business will get notified. If it happens again, you know, and these are things that we've got to talk about, is it a fine? Or is it, you know, you get to the point where we're all done collecting your contaminated stuff, you know? And these are things we just don't, we haven't gotten to that yet. These are things, what I would say is, we don't know what we don't know yet. And these are the finer points that will work out as we go through time.
Well, I was asking it more like, I hate to bring up the topic of liquor, but, I mean, some of the liquor establishments have a lot of recyclables because of all the containers and cases of stuff that they bring in. So I just, if we're going to be doing that, you know, what, they're going to be bringing half up to the transfer station themselves, whatever. On your other point, while I'm thinking of it, you know, the contamination issue is really interesting, because, as you probably know, as people are walking along the streets, they throw trash into other people's bins, or they throw their dog, you know, bag.
I'm well aware of that.
So, I mean, how would you, you know, I think you just, I don't know how, I don't know how you can prevent that.
I don't know how you can prevent that.
Because even my stuff is just sitting there, like, after you guys have come, people have thrown trash in.
Right. I understand. I mean, I can tell you stories about the downtown bins.
I can imagine.
You know, I mean, incredible. So there, it's an implementation process that's going to take us some time. And there'll be growing pains with it, I'm certain of it. But I think, you know, it's in the best interest of the town to move forward into the automation business, we're one of the few that doesn't do it yet. But we are looking forward to it. The vehicles are on order, so there's no stopping it now. I just needed to know total numbers, so I can move forward.
So in regards to that, there is no, there's nothing, you don't need a commitment from X businesses? You've got the information now that you need?
I can make some assumptions based on who we gather today, or collect today. And then I can make those orders, and then we can fine tune that going forward, knowing that I have built in extras into the account to keep on hand.
And if I'm a business, and in February, I choose to, at that point, take advantage of this service, I buy my bin in February with no problem? Or do I have to make a commitment prior to that?
I would say we'll, we'll set it up so that they, we should have enough on hand to address that, which I don't think there'll be a huge number. But I'll also, that will generate this requirement to have an order placed every six months, or something like that, to have X amount on hand. You know what I mean? So I have stock, whether it be for the residents, the business, whatever.
I would really like us to consider doing a, we've done this with other things, a sunset, it's not a sunset clause, but I'd like to review in a year. Once we put this into place, I want to look back at this and say, is this working? And I'm not suggesting to take away something that we're going to implement, but if we have to augment it, if it turns out that trash is more than the year before, that is not our goal here. So, so we would need to review it and then make adjustments, if any, at that point in time. So.
Just the commercial, or the whole entire?
Just, I think the whole thing.
Yeah. I think that was the last statement in my memo, Mr. Chairman.
Good.
About evaluating our policies as we go forward, after a period of time. If it's a year, that's fine. But we are still X amount of months away from implementation.
So, for, just real quick to put a bow on it, and certainly, Mary, you can ask your question, but we said one trash bin, one recycle bin. If the, if the resident or the business so chooses to, they can purchase an additional recycle bin. So I just said, one trash bin and potentially, two recycle bins. That's it. No more than that. If there's adjustments that we need to make a year down the road, or honestly, in an appropriate time, certainly, we're open and willing to listen to that. But that sounds like a reasonable and equitable, these are massive bins. If you've been to any other community, you can see them out there. Fall River comes to mind, because I'm, and Fall River all the time. And, you know, to your earlier point, there's little space between four and five and six level homes, and these fit in there no problem. So.
The other thing to note, too, is they have wheels on them. They're not, you don't have to drag.
Yes, they do have wheels.
They do have wheels on them.
Right. Mary?
I just wanted to know, I know we talked about it last time, how realistic is it to think this is going to get implemented in the, in the winter?
That's a great question, Councilwoman. I have my hesitation about implementation during the winter months, to be honest with you. And, and the reason I say that publicly is, the downtown area is my greatest concern. When we're plowing streets, and we have piles of snow, and we haven't figured out where to put these bins yet, with piles of snow, is not a good time to figure it out. That's my only hesitation. In the outlying areas, not a problem. You know what I mean? Almost anywhere else in town, the bins can go curbside or, or street side without any issue. It's downtown, and I'm, you know, you look at some of these streets tonight that we talked about for curb cuts, and no parking areas, and things like that, that's going to add to the.
There's not enough space to begin with, right?
I mean, so, and those are the things that I kept saying, we, we just don't know what we don't know yet. And that's part of it. Some of these streets, I won't be able to swing the arm, you know, we can't go down both ways. The truck backs in one way, the driver's still going to have to go over and hand load that, you know, to the arm, and let the arm pick it up from one side. And that's just the nature of what we're going to have to do.
So I wonder if you'll have to have a designated area where they'll have to bring their trash.
Well, that's one of the things we're looking at.
Yeah.
I had one last question from a constituent that I, as long as we're on this issue, and I know everybody is wanting to move on. But I had a constituent that asked, who is a business owner, the Island Daycare. And she was wondering if there's going to be like, a notice that's given prior to the cutoff of the commercial trash. Or, well, right now, there is no change in the commercial trash collection process. So there won't be a notice of that nature. But there will be plenty of public notice ahead of time when we start moving towards implementation of this process. When the bins go out, obviously, we're going to distribute townwide. And then we have to educate the public, you know, there'll be outreach and things of that nature, flyers. And then there'll be an execution date where we actually start collecting on a certain day. So they'll get all the cart, all the bins, carts, ahead of time. And it'll be a number of weeks before we say, okay, on this particular date, on this Monday, we're going to start collecting curbside with the new trucks.
Is there any other discussion?
Just a quick question. Councilman Lake, the, that individual, that business, is that a residential business?
No.
Oh, no? Okay.
Yeah, it's right, right by St. Michael's Church.
Okay.
And, yeah, right next to Neil.
A quick question and a quick comment. If the recycling goes to every other week, that would be.
Let's not get ahead of ourselves.
Okay. I'm just making a comment that I just, I have to put it, it's all in my office first. I have eight barrels this big that we fill every week, and I just don't even know what we would do. But that's, okay, for the future?
Yeah, that's a potential for the future, but we haven't even implemented initial process. So it's going to take us some time to figure it out.
And then just a question about what happens to all the other, what happens to all the barrels we have now? Like, there's a whole town of barrels going to be redundant. What happens to them? Who, will you take them?
I won't take them. Personally, no. I don't want your barrels. No, you know, I think, you know, we would do what we do with trash barrels now, that are considered no longer useful, and you mark trash on it, and they'd be thrown out with the rest of the municipal waste, unless they were recyclable. Some of them are. Some of the rubberized material is recyclable. The rest of it, I don't know.
Strangely enough, a recycle bin is not recyclable. I, I know, I know.
It just, the mind boggles when you think about how many are in town, and where are they going to go?
Right.
My suggestion would be rain barrels and compost bins.
Thank you.
There you go.
I'm with you on that one.
So, we need a motion to, I would say.
Jim, I just want to say thank you to everybody for working it out with us. Thank you, Steve, and Kevin, and all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need a motion to, I would say, adopt the policy set forth with the clarity and the parameters of one bin, one barrel, with the option of purchasing an addition, let me reword that, I apologize. One trash bin, one recycle bin, with the option of purchasing an additional recycle bin? And everything, did I get anything? Do I, did I miss anything? Okay.
And what is, do we have a start date?
And the cost, the cost would be borne by the business, any business that wants to take advantage of town trash and recycle pickup, the cost of those bins would be borne by those businesses. With, we're talking about a ballpark here, about $125, but that number is not set until we know what it actually cost us. But it's a good working number. Anything else?
Start date?
Start date, Kevin was, and was talking about quarter one of 2020. But it sounds like there's, there's some questions about, if our wintertime is difficult, and we have a lot of snow, we don't want to set ourselves up for failure. So.
The Town Administrator and I have had lengthy discussions on implementation dates based on truck arrivals and things of that nature. And we're squeezing down on the winter months.
So a projected quarter one start date?
Quarter one, to me, gives me a window that we can get going on, and still meet some of the goals that we're looking to meet. some of the goals that we're looking to meet.
Anything else? Is there a motion of that effect?
Show move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, and members of the town councils, item K1, this is the periodic report provided by Alan Klepper, the Barrington Director of Bristol County Water Authority.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to receive and file? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next, our individual council member, agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
We went through a lot tonight, I have nothing. Good night, everybody.
Mr. Sweeney.
I just wanted to comment on the Porch Fest. I went, and it was mobbed, it was an amazing amount of people there, I looked up High Street, there was tons, I mean, the bands were great, it was just economic development at its best. I think Porch Fest, I know people talk about expanding it, putting food trucks, bringing it all the way down High Street, I think we have a good thing going, let's, let's hold it there. But it was a lot of fun, it was a great event. Happy 150th anniversary to the Dreadnoughts, and that's it, have a good night.
Mr. Texira.
I'd just like to congratulate Artic Cabral for being selected many of the, by Bristol Sports. He was one of my, well, he was a soccer player on my first three years of coaching, back to 1979 and 80. So, but I look forward to attend the event, and, but certainly, the best of congratulations to him. That's it, good night.
Ms. Pirella.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring up the Pink Bag Initiative, and a couple of things about that. This is the time of year, I want to remind people that the pink bags, if you have some, if not, you can get them, you have them, Steve, didn't they send them to you? They're supposed to have sent a box, like, in spring, did they send it to your office? Somebody, you have it?
If, if anyone is having difficulty obtaining those bags, please call Public Works, and we can get it to them, or take care of that issue. If they've used it, and they want another one, and they didn't get one, let us know, and we'll work that out.
And the other thing, so, there should be plenty in town, and you can also go on at Simple Recycling's website and, and get them. I did want to make reference that they are, they pick up multiple, multiple towns in one day, so that, they ask people to give them up until 5 o'clock, that, in the evening, before people call and say they didn't get picked up. I did want to give a number, and also for you, Kevin, they had, he had called me to tell me that it was going to administrative office, and it was actually a customer service number, and I can just write this out for you as well, it's 1-866-835-5068. And that is only if it is not picked up. Now, I just want to reiterate, because people do have favorite charities, and if you usually give it to a charity, Big Sisters, or the Food Pantry, or whatever, that you give your used clothing or textile donations, to continue to do that, but this is any textile clothing or bedspreads, old curtains, old towels that you may be getting rid of, rugs, and even some small toys and other household goods, you can put them out in the pink bags, so, and they will follow, it follows your regular trash recycling day. So, I saw three out today at one place, I was like, wow, that's pretty good. Sometimes I see a lot, sometimes I don't, but in fall, as people are moving their clothing around, and it's getting a little chilly, I'm going to remind you that that is there, and it does, everything we've just talked about with the trash, it keeps very heavy items out of the landfill and out of the waste stream. And we actually believe, we're not doing this to get any money, it's very small amounts, but they actually give us some money per, per ton of clothing.
And we also get data on the tonnage that's been diverted from the landfill, and we get credit towards that for diversion rate.
Oh, good.
So, I just want you to know, there is an accountability there.
Oh, good.
As a, kind of a closure on that whole.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to remind people of that, it's the pink bags, and, let me see if I have these, just as a quick reminder, if anybody wants to, it looks like that, you just fill it up, and you put it out with the trash, and they will leave you, if you, they'll leave you a new one, so. And if you need them, get, call Kevin at DPW.
I'd like to know if they're pink.
Are they pink?
They're pink bags?
Yeah, they're nice, a nice shade of pink, too.
Set?
Yes, I'm set.
Mr. Lay.
All right, I'll try to keep this quick, I just wanted to say something about Chief Burke, you know, congrat, or thanks for your service and everything like that with the police department. I was very excited to hear about your success with the, the compliance check the other day, with the babying products and everything like that. And so, if you can just convey to your men that, the men and the women in the law, in your, in the police department, our thanks for getting ahead of that issue, that would really mean a lot to, I think, a lot of us here on the council. The, we were talking about tipping fees and everything like that, we, Councilman Sweeney really took the leadership on composting this time around. I've started composting, and so, I, I did the math, I did some back envelope stuff, my family will be responsible for diverting 832 pounds of trash, a family of four, so that's about almost half a ton. So, I'm kind of responsible for maybe saving maybe $25 through that whole effort, but...
You should not throw away as much food, my goodness.
Well, I have two kids, a one-year-old and a three-year-old, so sometimes things just don't get eaten. So, so, that, that's, you know, if you think about it, 50 families of four are going to divert 41,600 pounds of trash, and if we were able to ever get 500 families to do something like that, we were looking at 416,000 pounds. So, that's one way that we can get those tipping fees down, and that's one way that we can go about saving taxpayer dollars, if we educate our kids about that, or if our kids educate us about that, really, that's, that's what's going to end up happening. One more thing, 10,000 small businesses, Chris Vitale has really taken the lead on this. Jen Cavallaro, who is here today from the Beehive Pantry, she's going to be sharing a little bit about her experiences with that program. It's a small business growth program, it's going to be on September 25th, from 5:30 to 7 o'clock at JR Bean. There'll be complimentary food over there and a cash bar, and so, if you're a small business, and growth is kind of your thing, the, the businesses that participate in that program demonstrate a high percentage of growth, actually, and sustained growth, so, I think Jen would be very willing to share her experiences with that, and that's all I have.
Town administrator, agenda items.
Thank you. I received a text message this morning from Director Williamson, that there are cranes in the sky downtown of the Prudence Island Dock Project.
I was there this morning, yeah, yeah. Looks great.
Yeah, the sheet piling is in, road paving's continuing, our fire chief has been monitoring the triple E mosquito, call it an epidemic, daily conference calls with the EMA and DEM. There have been no mosquitoes trapped in the East Bay thus far, that have, that are shown to be infected, but we're still asking for the public to use long sleeves, bug spray with DEET, and to be mindful of the mosquitoes.